Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll start our meeting now. This is the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority. It is August 18th, 2014, 15:00 PM. Calling the meeting order, roll call please.
Stroller, Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. I do declare a quorum. And for our invocation tonight, Reverend Josh Kerr has come from his ministered First Presbyterian Church. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, through the prophets, you called your people Israel to righteousness, and through your Son Jesus, you showed us a life lived through your love. Send your Holy Spirit now upon these community leaders that with every word they speak and every vote they cast, they may seek justice, love-kindness, and walk humbly with you through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you. On our agenda tonight, first item is the consent agenda. Only thing on there is approval of the minutes of our last PMA meeting.
Make a motion to approve the second.
We have a second. Oh, Bill, roll call please.
Dow.
He's good.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item four, it pertains to the PMA for comments. Are there anyone assembled who used to need to address the Perry Municipal Authority about any item on the municipal authority agenda? Seeing none, is there any proclamations, commendations, reports, or inquiries by the governing body for this council tonight? Seeing none, any new business? No new business, item seven.
Make a motion to adjourn for a second.
Make a motion to second, roll call please.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Perry, August 18th, 2014. Roll call please.
Stroller, Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. First item on this agenda also is consent agenda. Items A, B, and C with subtitles under C, is there anything on there that anyone would like to withhold and discuss further?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Roll call please.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
We'll move down to item four. As Karen will attest, this is the time when you can speak publicly about any item that is on the agenda tonight.
I was trying to talk any other time, we're not on it.
We're not on it. Well, let's go ahead. We do have some people who'd like to speak to us who are owners of properties around the lake, which is a project that the Department of Agriculture started. They asked me if they could speak, and I told them they could. Would you stand at the podium, give your name, please?
My name is Terry Leonard. I'm a property owner, family's a property owner adjacent to the lake. And I would like to bring you on the record that I am opposed to the raising of the elevation of the water at Perry Lake. It's kind of interesting the way this thing has transpired. Three years ago, when we were in here at the City Council meeting, and the NRCS was here, and they wanted to present a plan to raise the dam, raise the water level, and of course it was going to cost the citizens money. So, the City Council voted not to, and the NRCS wanted to just develop a study. Now they come back, lo and behold, they have more money. Well, like every governmental agency, they know how to spend money. I guess that's justified their existence. But we got a government's broken, as you all know. Now, the lake, they come to us with the, under pretenses that the lake's dam is in bad shape. Well, it is an 80-year-old dam, and it does seep, but that's not uncommon for dams, earthen dams, in this country. I can show you a lot of places where it seeps. That doesn't mean that they're unstable. But be that as it may, they want to raise the lake heights three feet. Yet they also want to raise the water level two feet. Now, I don't quite understand. If we have dam, that's in bad shape, and it's a threat to people down below, why are we raising the water level and putting more pressure on the old dam? And it comes to also a question of need. We don't use the water. You get water from Lake Merkett, you have a long-term contract with Lake Merkett. So why are we raising the lake? Is it to sell more water to the oil companies? I'm a property owner. I don't want to lose any land. And there's many others around the lake that's the same one. So my point is, the reason why I came here, I want you all to understand my position, and I may not be expected to be as bad as some of the others. But if we don't need it, why raise the water level? If we want to raise the dam, fine. If we want to raise spillway, bigger spillway, fine. We don't need to raise the water level. Thank you. I promise Mayor Johnson that I'll be quick, sure.
Thank you, very appreciated.
I'm Galen Dormand. I live out at Perry Lake on the north side. I've lived there 30 years. I brought my property from Stuart Beasley, and he was a county surveyor. My house is supposed to be the height of the dam, but it's not. It's the height of the spillway, so that's why I'm concerned. My wife is with me, and she didn't want to say anything. As Terry said, we're not against rehabbing the dam. We think that's a good idea. Make it safe, make it safe for everybody down here, make it safe for the city of Perry, because if it breaches, Exchange Bank are going to have two foot of water in the lobby. So we don't want that either. What I'm concerned about is the elevations. Terry said the elevation right now on the principal spillway, that's where the water goes out, and then it stays at that level. It's at 1083, and they want to raise it to 1084.5. That's only a foot and a half, but it takes up 77 more acres of ground. And then, he wasn't concerned about the auxiliary spillway, but I am. My house is sitting at 1090.7, and the spillway right now is at 1088, 1089, and they want to raise that to 1090.6. So something would have to be done. If it floods and goes over, then I would have to either have a burn, or move my house, or be bought out, or something. And that's my main concern, is the elevations. I'm not opposed to rehabbing the dam. The other thing I wanted to say was, when we were here three years ago, we had a different group. I think everybody here now is pretty well-known except for Mayor Johnson. Were you? Okay. So that's why we wanted to come to the council, just kind of let you know our feelings. We've met with all the groups one-on-one, and then we wanted to just kind of get a general outlook out to everybody here on what we're doing and what we're talking about, and just so you kind of, if you have other questions of us or something, you can ask us some other time.
Thank you, Galen.
Are we going to have to buy some property?
We don't know. They haven't finished the design yet, and the level they're talking about is a preliminary guess at this point as to what they do. We really don't know if it's going to go higher, it might even be lower. We don't know until they provide a design, certainly.
My name is Dennis Brand. I represent my mother, Esther Brand, who was unable to attend this evening. Much like two previous property owners, we're very much opposed to raising the dam. This land's been in our family for many, many years, and when the dam was raised last time, it reduced our land to 37 acres. So we're frankly not interested in surrendering any more of our land. During the presentation by the NRCS, on two occasions, representatives gave us assurances that the integrity of the dam was intact, but in fact, there were new federal guidelines that dealt with the dispersal of water above the dam, and therefore, this auxiliary spillway was needed. So there's never any comment or suggestion that the water supply for the city of Perry was in jeopardy, and therefore, no need to raise the water level. So again, I'm supporting, obviously, you know, I don't know how much the city of Perry or the state of Oklahoma, to that matter, has in the decision here. I suspect these are federal mandates that to some degree, the city and the state will have to comply with. But the NRCS, and I take them at the word, held these meetings to seek feedback from the property owners. So again, we're hopefully giving you good feedback, which you can also represent in your conversation with the NRCS. And even to the extent that they don't raise the dam, and with the new federal flood guidelines, rather than using a 100-year flood, and so many inches in five hours or 10 hours, under the existing proposal, these standards have now been increased to something far more. And I understand that. So to the extent that there would be periods of time of a thousand-year range, if that ever occurred, you know, obviously, the lake level would rise, and it would dispense over a period of days to these two spillways. As Brand family goes, we'd be amenable to some type of flood easement as opposed to deeding title to our property. So we'd be open-minded to that, but not surrendering any more decent title to our property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would there be any others? Anyone else need to talk to the council about a topic tonight?
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Sure.
As far as the council goes in looking into this, is this something that's going to be on future agendas, that we're going to be talking, discussing?
They have to design the plan, and then submit to us for...
Okay.
Do they have a timetable for when the design is complete?
They told us probably 18 months to 24 months effective design.
So effectively, could it be a...
Yeah, sure could.
So, when they have the plan, is it something that we can change, or is it going to be set and stuff?
We don't know that yet. Just as the property owners have said, we all were invited in for discussions, but until they have a final plan, we don't know. It's just like, you know, we never know what the final plan of the school building's going to be until they get it done.
Mayor Johnson. It could be a...
Yes. Will they have more than one plan, or will they just issue you a final plan that is final? That I don't know. There could be a percentage, like 70% submitted for review, gives basic what's going to happen, you know, 80, 90, something like, architects or engineers might submit to the federal government on a project. Do you have any input into it, into this final plan? We're going to try. If they want us pony up some money, we're darned we're going to try.
I mean, input as to what you want.
I don't know that, Terry. I just don't know that.
I had somebody call me, and they said it might cost us $1.8 million to buy some property around the lake.
Well, we're not looking to buy any property.
But if we have to?
The federal government has to.
Well, it's our land.
Actually, I would suggest that we have this on a future agenda, because we're starting to get into actually discussing it like it was an agenda item. And so, and I have a little bit of report, on my city manager's report, I have a little bit of information about the project. And so, while I appreciate those who have come and shared with us, you know, the discussion around the table maybe is a little premature.
Well, the real issue is you don't want to violate the Open Meeting Act, you know, because there may be people out there that just would love for that dam to be raised, and the water level to be raised, and because it's not on the agenda, they don't have an opportunity to speak. So that's why, you know, you can hear comments, but once it gets into, you know, a general discussion about the issue, it'd be better to place that item on the agenda and talk about it. I would just say briefly, briefly, you know, you've got a lake, and it's been a siltation trap, you know? And so there's silt, and when there's silt in there, you can't put as much water in there. So you either take the silt out and get the same depth, or you have to do something else, you know? They say removal of the silt is a very, very expensive proposition, but I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. But I do know that 40, 50 years of silt has, you know, has gone.
I'm going to call for the next item. We're discussing too much. And I don't want to go to jail for you guys. Item five, thank you very, very much. Item five, proclamation, commendation, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Seeing none, city manager's report.
I will. First off, Centennial Clock was repaired last Tuesday, keeping good time, so you should be good to go there for a while. Item two is in regard to the rehabilitation of the dam at Perry Lake. Representatives of local and state NRCS, the Oklahoma Conservation Commission, and the city of Perry held individual meetings with 12 landowners. Would have been on July 31st and August 1st. This provided the landowners an opportunity to provide their questions, and their comments, and their concerns to those within NRCS. And they, and we really appreciate the time that the property owners, the landowners, gave to talk with NRCS, because they're very hopeful that those, the notes from those meetings will be helpful whenever the design engineers begin their work, because there may be many of those concerns and issues that can be addressed during the design stage. And the design stage is 18 to 24 months, which is what the mayor mentioned. Also, the questions and the concerns will be helpful as we work with NRCS to develop a frequently asked questions list, or sheet, so that, you know, we know your concerns and we know your questions, and so it will be helpful. And that FAQ is already in the process of being developed.
Is that something that will be posted on our website?
It'll be available in general to anyone interested, and we can post it on the website. Really, the next major project is that NRCS will be selecting the A and E, the engineering firm, that will actually do the design. They are using, they're selecting a private firm rather than doing it in-house, and so they're going through that process of selection. And I would imagine, you know, we may be a few weeks away from them making that announcement and selecting that firm. The engineering firm will then prepare the geological investigation bore plan, and that will lay out the access routes and the land where they need to complete the boring and the sampling. And the city of Perry is actually responsible for obtaining permission from those property owners where the work would actually occur. This is all preliminary, it's geological investigation, so that they know what's down there. There's rock, you know, what type of subsurface soils and situations are they going to encounter? So that will be the city of Perry's responsibility. We'll work with the local NRCS people as well, and our city attorneys. That's really kind of the next couple of steps, selection of the engineering firm, and obtaining permission from those landowners where the engineer will need to have access onto the properties to do geological investigation. And so, I know there's a ton of questions, we have lots of questions too, and so, you know, keep the questions and the comments coming, because, you know, we can pose those questions to NRCS and ask them to respond. On behalf of Chief Thomas, school's back in session, and so fair warning, those going over the posted speed limit in the school zones will be severely dealt with, and the judge shows no mercy. I think our, is it, what's our fine?
$200.
$200. That would get my attention. I have interviews for the Assistant Fire Chief position, and Russell Brand will begin his duties as Assistant Fire Chief on August 29th. We're happy to have the Brands moving back to Perry. 16th celebration is less than a month away. Lots of volunteer effort goes into this event, planning for thousands of visitors to our community, and lots of things planned and going on, just like they do every year. And we would ask the Perry residents to do a little sprucing up. I know we should be spruced up all year round, but sometimes we wait until visitors come to town before we mow, and we even get all that trash picked up, so. And I'll probably be prodding the community a little bit more about that as we get closer. Also, the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, September 2nd. The first is Labor Day, and so we'll just meet one day later, doing our normal duty on Tuesday, September 2nd. And that's my report.
Thank you. Our chief financial officer will now report. Mary?
Hi, guys. You all getting me today? I'm not sure what rests is there. I think it's just being lazy. Can we get that on the record?
It's on the record.
I do have to say, I was at Russell Brand's current place of employment today. Saw him, he came into the office while I was there, and the man jumped up and down, like, seriously. He is so excited to be back in this community, having just a huge smile on his face. He's very excited, so. All right, financials. First month of the year, pretty easy month. And total cash for the city of Perry, $7.3 million. Basically, no change everywhere we were last month. Based upon our collections and utility, we're down about $6,000, a negligible amount, in consideration of the amount of cash that we have on hand. Of that $7.3 million, we're split basically half and half, in what's restricted and what's unrestricted. And sometimes when we start the new fiscal year, we've got additional restrictions coming on, and there are no new restrictions of cash based upon any additional debts or anything like that. So, and pretty standard cash report. When you look at the general fund, we are one month in, that's 8%, so your threshold is 8%. If you look at sales tax, you will be pleasantly surprised. We're at 10% of our sales tax budgeted revenues right now, starting out the year strong. You know we budget those conservatively, so, but still, starting out strong. Let's focus on that positive. And as you work down through here, you'll see all of our revenues are trending at or above where we expected, where we budgeted them to be. And specifically, when you look in library, you'll see that there are 36% of their budget related to the state reimbursement, has already, and already seen part of that come in. In total, after we transfer in our standard $204,000, and that leaves us with a net loss for the year, for the one month of $34,000. Everything's trending good. No significant scares or concerns to be worried about in the first month.
Economic development expense, what do we have there?
That's the start of setting aside those funds for the ballpark. So that's how that's running clear. Move into PMA for other questions. Okay. PMA, we look at more on the operational side. Are we covering our costs in electric, water, sewer, and trash? And you will see everyone except for sewer is covering. We had our first semi-annual debt service payment come out of sewer. It is a semi-annual payment, so the fact that we incurred all of that in the first month is what's causing that to show a little bit of a loss. Overall net operating income of $337,000, showing a strong profit, 14% of budget. We talked about 8% is the benchmark, so 14%, we're starting out strong. And surprisingly, unlike what I've seen in some of my other communities, your electric sales were strong this month, 10% of budget. Everyone else is seeing really, really low profit margins, because it's been a relatively cool July. So, surprised to see that, and it's a good, it's a good thing to see. Total net income for the one month, $155,000.
Do we expect a power cost adjustment on electric this year?
Did we expect it? Did we? Yes, I mean, we budgeted for it. It's centered. It should be consistent with what we've done in the past. When I budgeted those electric revenues, I budget one month sunlight.
When's that come?
Oh, it comes every month. The power cost adjustment, it's on our bill?
What we voted on, I mean, we vote on an increase?
Oh, that's the annual increase that goes with...
That's what I'm talking about, then.
I'm sorry. No, it happened in July. It's in here. It's done.
Should be part of these...
It's from three years July.
Thank you, Mary. Do you have other questions? Next item, item eight. Approval of contract with DC Bass &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated for the construction of the Perry Sports Complex project. Anyone have any questions concerning this contract? We've got a statement in there where it will be conditional, is that still true?
Yes. We do have the signed agreements from DC Bass, so they're ready for, if the council approves, it's ready for your signature.
Is this signed agreement any different than the one that was in our package?
Yes, it is different. The amount is different. It reflects a deduct of $19,089. They did some value engineering, and on the parking lot, we took a look at that to determine whether or not what was in the specs was somewhat of an overkill, and so we went back with a little different approach. We'll still do the heavy, you know, in the traffic, travel lanes with the light and the parking stalls, but with a little bit less. And so, everybody was of the opinion that it was, you know, I mean, it was Jeff's recommendation that this looked good to them. He ran it past their civil engineers, and so...
He ran it past their civil engineers, and so with that, the amount is actually $1,946,870.58.
That the only...
Actually, you may have the updated one.
Well, the one that we handed out is the lesser of the two, the one in the packets, nineteen sixty-five.
When you say it's less on the road, what does that mean?
On the parking lot.
What does that mean?
They've made a change. They've looked at it to see whether or not the specifications that were bid, if they can reduce that in any way, but still maintain the quality and the integrity of the parking lot surface. And so based on that, there was a recommendation to make a change prior to the contract being awarded. You can do a change order later, but we really wanted to do, you know, make it effective with the approval of the contract.
I'm just saying, what was that change?
The driving surfaces for the cars that go in and out of parking lots, those are heavy, whereas where you actually park would be a thinner part of pavement.
It has to do with...
Because there's no, there's no, the weight there, and it's mainly dead weight for most time, and you just don't need that much parking depth for an automobile.
I had Jim Davis come in. He says that this was routinely done when we had projects, because the engineers would always over-engineer the parking lots. So, and he said, we did that in nearly every contract we had. So I did have him come in and, you know, and take a look.
Check you.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I think, I don't know that the engineers over-engineered it, but based on the geological investigation and the report, that's why the engineers decided that it needed to be beefed up a little bit more. And so, it was, it probably was a little bit overkill, and so feeling like it could be, you know, reduced, like I say, without sacrificing the quality of the paving and all that.
You want to go to rock?
Not rock.
No.
We've been after people to not put rock in, and then we're going to put rock in.
Well, the main thing is that you have a good base.
Well, what about the fully loaded buses and things like that? Are we, if that constant use of buses driving up in there, I mean, for automobiles, I agree that the thinner...
That's why we kept the heavy duty and the travel lane.
Okay, so we're still good for that?
Yeah.
So it was designed for like semi-trucks to drive over it or something? Is that what you're saying?
Well, a little bit, yeah.
It's been time-heavy, but it's, the parking spaces will be lighter, thinner.
Okay. Oh, I got you. So the travel area is still beefed?
That's right.
We just took off where the dead weight is?
Any other questions? What's your recommendation, council?
Is that the only difference? Which is that?
Take a motion to approve the contract with DC Bass, if I have to say again.
And that's conditional upon review of insurance and bonds.
Yes. Why do you say that?
Yeah.
Conditional upon the review...
Yeah, roll right off.
Of bonds and insurance. Any second. There we go.
Roll call, please.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman? Nation?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Warner? No. Johnson?
Yes.
Item nine. Received recommendation of the Perry Planning Commission on the site plan review of the blacksmith shop at the Cherokee Strip Museum. Take action as needed on the site plan. Jason?
Yes, sir. Will you be represented for the planning commission?
Well, no, you can, but I know Frank don't want to be. I'll represent. Go ahead.
On August seventh, we had a planning commission meeting, and the main thing on the agenda was the blacksmith shop, the site plan review for the blacksmith shop. The planning commission had a chance to review the site plan and look at my recommendation for the site plan, which I reviewed all of the code requirements and didn't find any disqualifying factors, and recommended approval to the planning commission. And the planning commission in turn also is going to recommend approval of the site plan to the city council. Is there any questions on the site plan itself?
I like it.
I think it'd be a great addition to the city. Definitely going to be good for the museum out there, it's an exciting new feature that they're going to have out there.
I might say that some of the committee members are here that helped put this together for the museum, Jim Crowder and Jay Gilbert. Thank you for attending. Appreciate it.
Take a motion to approve.
Second. Call call.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Warner? Yes. Johnson?
Yes. Consider First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement with RSM LLC concerning performance bond requirement.
I'm going to this guy. Okay, well, Mr. Azure Johnson did sign on behalf of RSM LLC, the First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement, but he did not sign the Certificate of Deposit Guarantee Agreement, and so...
Which I would like to see signed.
Yes.
Before the council takes action.
Before we amend this agreement. So if we, we still have some board adjustment meetings, we have some planning commission meetings.
So do you need a motion to table this?
To the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Say again.
Weren't they supposed to get a site plan now?
Oh, yes, they are.
Did they ever get that in?
No, no, it's not in yet, but the planning commission meeting is not scheduled.
Same Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Warner? Yes.
Yes. Any new business? Item eleven.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moxley? Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Warner?
Yeah.